Hear a little bit more um you know from from people in specialized areas, I I guess I would say those stakeholders in those specialized areas. Um but one thing I do want to point out is it is it has been really helpful um to to the staff, to the consultant team, to uh members of our community to make sure that even these stakeholders are being heard by the larger community, that they're not just kind of off in a corner talking with themselves, because I think it's so important for the community to hear what these stakeholders have to say and what's important to them. Um and so that's that's why we have not put so much emphasis on stakeholder meetings, because we need to have a broader perspective as a community.
Right, and I would only encourage adding a layer if that layer leveled up all the information that's been acquired, but to your point not being you know, kind of a one-way street down the road and then nobody else who was part of generating it gets the benefit of seeing that too, so um. I trust the process and I just wanted to ask you about that and know that um. Finding that through line, you know, and testing it i- is important and so if if that is coming or if that's culminating around the time of the work session, I'll know to kind of expect it then, or if you tell us at that point, you still think there's one more one more pass, yeah, that would be helpful too, so. Sorry if this feels a little abstract and you know, I'm sure you can understand, it's just we've been so far away from it for a little while in some senses, but I'm excited to get back closer to it.
Have facilitators and given their very honest and open input as the mayor for Tim uh alluded to, uh you know, that they they are not a shy bunch and they're thoughtful and um really bring um bring things around for us as adults to listen closely to. So uh there there has been direct outreach for uh to the youth council.
P- PK, uh but so the Mr. Reddell said, um how are we reporting back to the broader community? Um or or is that part of the process?
So it is part of the process and we are going to be posting um results and uh the community input um as they become available on the Decatur twenty thirty dot com website. Um so we'll have that information available. I mean, it will certainly be an appendix uh as as part of the the plan that gets adopted, um so so that it becomes part of the record.
Okay, so so I mean, I we aren't really taking shape yet, I guess, but I mean, do we check in and just say, hey? Uh and this is my first strategic planning process. Draft number one is ready or take a look at draft number two and invite people in as opposed to posting it, or is that not how the process of developing the plan works?
Typically, um what we have done in done in the past is um you know, we'll work on different sections of of the, you know, report, we'll be developing um the 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 principles and the goals and the tasks um and then presenting that at a work session with you all. Um and that would be the first time that um you, as well as the public, would be able to to see that and then keeping it open um for a couple more months so that we're able to 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 really review it, um make sure that we're being clear and intentional with with the the goals and the tasks that we want to complete over the next ten years. Um and you know, that but that's typically how we've done it, um is be able to present that um as a public document during a work session with you all.
Also, in the past, we have held like a community open house where people come and put post-it notes on the on and comment on the on the things that they're hearing. And I think we'll end up having to do that online this time, but that's what An- Angela said, leaving it open for two months gives people a chance to make comments or make notes of what's missing or um you know, what to co- to comment on it.
Probably, yeah, and then I did, I shot over to the Decatur twenty thirty website when you were talking, Mr. Reddell. And so there is an opportunity right now for the general public still to go there and to provide feedback and comments. And so if we wanted to, we could encourage people to do that and help promote it.
Please do, yes, I mean, we are logging a lot of um comments, eh especially within the virtual forums as well as the feedback through um that kind of online survey, if if you will. Uh so the it is still open, um and we encourage, you know, all to participate in those virtual forums as well as the Decatur two oh twos.
And Angela, the two oh twos that have been held, those are also available on the website for people to go back and review or to watch.
Yeah, so um we held the transportation and mobility Decatur two oh two on November nineteenth. Um and there is the the video and we had our our panelists, but folks can go in and and watch that video. And then within the virtual forums, um we have a uh a topic and a survey for folks to take um dedicated to, you know, transportation and mobility issues. Um the other one uh is housing, specifically um affordable housing, and that was held on December tenth. And again, there is the video um that is available. And then again, the virtual forums um provide an opportunity to collect uh, you know, input from those that were not able to participate in those breakout sessions.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions regarding the strategic plan? Great, we'll move on to affordable housing.
I think I'm still up. Um, okay, so on this one, I believe the the first one uh was related to the presentation of the task force report. We aim to have that completed um in, you know, the first quarter, which we were able to do in February of twenty twenty. Um and in the task force, I I I have to continue to com- commend the incredible work of each of the members of the task force and then, of course, the staff that assisted and supported uh the the task force and, you know, the subcommittees, I mean, i- it was just incredible how much time and effort um and knowledge and experience was dedicated to producing this document. Um it has twenty-three recommendations and so we're, I think, you know, I think we're all very proud that um we have a actionable document, um so I I would put a check mark um by that one, that that one is complete. Um and then the second is related to the mandatory inclusionary housing ordinance, which Commissioner Meyer had mentioned earlier as one of our roses um to celebrate this year. Uh and so, you know, that I I want to put a check mark by that as well, but you know, with all new ordinances, I will say, you know, a couple of years, you know, down the road, when we've had a chance to to actually implement this with a couple of uh different projects, we may be able to, you know, go back in and kind of tweak that and make sure that um it's fitting our needs, so um but for right now, I I would put a a check mark by that.
Okay, great. Thoughts, questions?
I think those are two really big wins. We should be celebrating successes as we push forward for new goals, so. Yay, team.
Yay, team. All right, good work. Annexation growth. Anything to report out?
I mean, not only are there, were well, were there no plans for annexation, um that also um was essentially ratified in June of this year um at the request of the school system. Um because of their ongoing negotiations um with the county school system, they requested that the the city uh commit to not annexing for uh for a year, and so that is a commitment that the city commission made. Um and that was effective in July of this year. And and I mean, I think there was a caveat, I mean, there may be some exceptions. Um, uh just, um but but as a rule, um there we the city commission committed to um not annexing for a year. Um and if the mayor and commissioners want to speak to to staying informed, um I'm I'm confident that that is the the case. But if they have any specific um actions that um that have been taken, I'll defer to mayor and commissioners.
I have met with, um, I did a Zoom call with um the chair of the school board, Lewis Jones, and um Tom Gale about there has been some um proposed legislation by um general legislation by Mary Margaret Oliver that um both the uh the that uh GMA has taken a look at because they, if it's general legislation, it impacts um uh the entire state, if it's not local legislation and they're um and Tom had met with Mary Margaret about some of the the issues in terms of um not only annexation, but the role of uh development authorities and um some of the uh sort of like getting permission um to it when something is annexed, um looking at, you know, who has the uh what developmental rights go with that, and so I think um I'm not aware of any where any of those bills are are going. Um it was Tom Gale from GMA's uh expectation that this was gonna be a quick session, just taking care of the uh things that they felt like during a pandemic that the they had to do. Um but it we all know that the state legislature can from can provide us with surprises, so um I think we intend to still have um a lobbyist with their ear to the ground as what is with respect to what is is going on at the at the State House, and I have had um some conversations with um Senator Parent and plan to reach out to um to Carla Drenner, who I believe will still be the the chair of the DeCap delegation. I did meet on a um Zoom call, one of the new members of the DeCap delegation that does not represent us, but it is the Reverend uh Kim Jackson, and uh it was delightful to to be able to meet her and told her, you know, I would like to meet her in person, and so um because we we depend on the entire delegation, not just the four people that represent the city of Decatur, so um we'll keep our ears to the ground and see what um what might transpire. I do know the city schools are working very hard to come up with some sort of agreement with the county schools so that there is not impending legislation that would negatively impact the city schools of of Decatur, and so I think they have um they are, I think, promoting a very fair um compromise that would include that any in the future, any property that might be annexed by the city of Decatur, the um school taxes would go, would stay, would be collected and then go to DeCap County, and the only um money that would come back to the city would be for a um to pay for the the students, that the cost to educate those students. And so um that's sort of what is um is being discussed right now, and I know that there was a meeting with um the entire DeCap delegation, that with representatives from the school system as well as representatives from DeCap County School System. Um so that and, you know, with respect to uh legislation, we just passed a resolution in support of the senior tax exemption um restructured for that the city schools will be will be presenting and we will be in involved in that in working with the uh state, our our state delegation. So um I think uh with respect to annexation and growth, it is my expectation that um we we have, you know, we've made a statement saying that we would not consider any annexations for a for a year and that other things that come before us, um we'll just keep our ears to the ground and and um see what happens during the during the um legislative session. So staying informed, I is um, I think, a a key part of of that role.
Great.
Thank you.
Can we put the uh end date of the year in there? Is it June twenty?
Uh, July, it's July twenty twenty-one. I don't I don't have the exact date.
Yeah, I just meant the month.
Yeah. Um it was from June to July twenty twenty-one? Actually, I think it was, I I believe it was actually adopted in July and we said for twelve months. I I think I would just have the end date. I wouldn't specify exactly when it started, but just say, you know, through, you know, through July twenty twenty-one.
All right. Board and commissions.
Um in February of twenty twenty, we did survey all of the um advisory board members that had rolled off um and just got their, you know, got their general feedback about their experience. Um I would say, you know, overall, they were, the comments were complimentary, very complimentary of staff and the support that they received from staff, um those boards that required um, you know, specialized training um recognize the training that they received. There were some folks who, you know, expressed frustration with sometimes they felt like they didn't have enough time to, uh you know, to commit, you know, I as a volunteer to the board. Um, trying to see what else, think what else some of the other feedback was. There was really just a genuine appreciation uh of of being able to give back to their community, so I think there's a real well, um there's a lot that that we receive um from the volunteers that serve on these boards and commissions. Yeah, I think there's a recognition that, you know, there's uh there's a benefit to those that that serve as well. You know, the final question to everyone was, hey, do you want, do you want a phone call from the city manager? Um or, you know, follow up with the city manager. One person said, yes, I reached out. Um and it would never, you know, I actually, they said, yeah, if she wants to call me, that's fine. Um and and again, uh everyone else was like, no, I'm good, thanks, but basically, thank you for reaching out and asking. So that was the kind of the the survey, unscientifically, in a nutshell. Um but from there, um we have not taken that information and made any changes with the boards and commissions. Um, I I know we had talked about updating the charges, you know, to the boards and commissions. I suspect that's something that the commission is still interested in us looking at. Um I'd like to add, um and this is something that Linda and I have talked about, you know, perhaps providing a role to um the Better Together Advisory Board is um is also making sure, I think maybe more more um urgently in terms of a focus for recruitment and appointments for next year is um is working to enhance the um the diversity of our uh our our pool of volunteers. Um and because right now, the system um does not seem to be um attracting a very diverse group of residents, so these are residents that serve. We normally put it out in the in the focus, you know, make a call for volunteers. Um, I think there's a, you know, fair amount of word of mouth. We do ask, you know, board members and staff that support those boards um to, you know, to reach out to people that they know in the community, nonetheless, um that that um the effectiveness of that, you know, seems to be limited in in terms of, you know, you know, of attracting a diverse group and, you know, harkening back to our conversation, you know, this morning. Um it's kind of, you know, putting, you know, putting our actions where our words are. Um, you know, we, you know, we we say we want to have um in diverse representation on these boards and commissions. Again, we say we put out the the notice and the focus. Um, you know, which we do, but I mean, we we clearly need to do something different um to um to diversify the the pool, so um. I don't know, if Linda wants to chime in, but I, you know, I would like to see us, I mean, I think we have a I I think the, instead of creating a new body, I think the Better Together Advisory Board is the right group that could assist us um in developing a process that um that that should like expand and diversify, um essentially the the candidate pool for the boards and commissions.
And the Better Together Advisory Board did talk about it, and they were excited about it. We did talk about how we um communicate now, and the the board was definitely offering suggestions of different ways to communicate it. Because if we keep communicating it the same way, we're still going to keep keep getting the same people, and um we had talked about getting all of the boards together and talking about it as a group, and then it COVID hit. So we we haven't pulled everybody together, um but they definitely, that's definitely something a role that they would be willing to help take on, because they do like to try to reach uh a different, uh communicate in a different way to different people, and I think if that's what the commission is is desires, I think they would, they would take that on willingly.
So it sounds like so far, that's something you are talking about moving forward.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, go ahead, George.
Sorry, um I noticed the other day, I was in AJC in one of our sister suburban cities. Actually, there is an article about them looking for board members. Um, and um it struck me that do we, I mean, because we, in addition to the focus a lot of people read Decaturish, um we could possibly add something to AJC, just I I was gonna encourage us to to look at those alternate opportunities.
We would definitely look at at casting a wider net.
Can I ask, um, you know, I think we looked at, you know, we re- reviewed the exit interviews. We've also had some turnover, uh at the end of every year, we look and see what boards are needing to be um to be filled. Can we make sure that that is done as any person exits the board?
Yeah, I see this. Yep, I see it as being an annual process. That's that's, I mean, I think that's what you're saying. I would like for this to be just, yep, every every January after after folks have rolled off to uh to get them, get their feedback. So that would be an ongoing, Q one, but ongoing from from year to year.
Right, so that's, I just, when it was, you know, when Kelly put complete on there, I just want to
Can change it.
Thank you.
Spell. Good. All right, and so just wanted to make sure that we will put it on twenty twenty-one, but we want to um continue to look at the charge, paying specific attention to enhancing the diversity pool, correct? Yeah, among other things, I'm certain.
Okay, I mean, there were a couple of folks, um you know, in the survey results that said um, you know, that we, you know, that we we should pay attention to, you know, the that some of the technical qualifications of the board members, and I mean, that's going to to vary uh, you know, based off of the the board, um, you know, they're 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 you know, it's it's helpful to have a certain expertise, especially for um you know, for those boards that are looking at, you know, fairly, you know, technical or specialized um, you know, projects and planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, the, you know, the downtown development authority. Um but we do try to diversify the skill sets as well, but um I I commend the commissioners for I mean, I've been in, you know, many of the conversations, you know, after the interviews and and really, you know, the commissioners spend um, I think, a a great deal of time um weighing the the experiences and expertise um that the um that the various volunteers could bring to the boards and sometimes say um, yeah, they were great, but I really think they should be on this other board instead of the one that they interviewed for.
Great. Feels like that one is complete. Any other comments? Um, budget?
I I'm scratching my head while we put that on there. Maybe we wanted to make sure, we put something on there that we knew we would do. But let's just, I'm sure when we put it on there, we didn't know that it was gonna, the budget was gonna look like it looked um in in June of twenty twenty, but of course, that's that was completed, that's an ongoing um an ongoing task, and I welcome any feedback that the commissioners may have in terms of just the work session itself. I mean, it's a, you know, we normally, we we move up the the time, we meet pretty um, you know, we meet in the middle of the afternoon, we allocate a couple of hours to it. Um, uh probably never have enough time and to dive into it. In addition to the work session, you know, there is opportunity, um, you know, to meet one-on-one with commissioners to to get into to more detail of the budget, but we do make sure that we we hold that work session. I believe it's gotten um a little more thorough over over the years, um a lot of information at one time. But um, yeah, there's any feedback on that, but I can guarantee you that we'll do it again in June twenty twenty-one.
So Andrea, just a quick comment, and I I it seems like we put it up there for a reason, and I honestly don't remember, but how about um just, you know, as a line or just a subject under there? You know, where there are opportunities to make an adjustment for, you know, like we budgeted for the climate action plan, so uh, you know, I'm not sure when the uh individual team members are presenting their budget but looking at places where, you know, if there is a contingency for whatever that is like I say, at this time of the climate action plan, or it was the uh eighty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars for uh that went into the budget for uh the racial training and the speaker series. But, you know, opportunities like that where, you know, we may not get a crack at it at some point down the line. If that makes sense.
So, I mean, are are you saying, out so outside of the work session, but making sure that we're affording ourselves the opportunity to um to continue, or I guess affording ourselves the opportunity to um to 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 fund or to include um activities outside of the budget cycle or my that thing, that's what I'm hearing, is that opportunities arise outside of the traditional budget cycle and but make sure that we're able to capture those.
Yes.
Okay, and that is a little bit different than what this, I mean, twenty twenty was different. Um, and we um, it it was, it was different to come back to the city commission in December, um, you know, with um with kind of a, you know, you know, mid-year requests that had not been, but I think in back in June, we were pretty intentional when we said you know, here's some requests and we're just not, we're not in a position to fund them. Um, but uh definitely, that could be um, I think we need to leave ourselves open for for that, because otherwise, you know, we're essentially making decisions as staff and, you know, February, March, April, uh maybe into May. Um and then we're, that's what we're committed to uh for, you know, July through June. Well, obviously, as we see, a lot of things, a lot of things can change, I mean, in a short amount of time, and need to make sure that we're in a position to um, you know, to to seize those opportunities.
Would you like that captured?
I would.
Please.
I mean, I think it's, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, retain flexibility for um, the mid-year budget opportunities. Um, all right, yeah, that's good. George, are you trying to say something?
No, my son walked in asking a question.
Oh, okay. All right. And that, of course, will move over into 2021 as well. Okay. Climate change and resilience planning. I'm looking at Mr. Younger.
Yeah, so um, the Agnes Scott Resiliency Plan report has been ongoing. Uh, David Nifong has been uh, working with Agnes Scott on this project. Um, the effort started in 2018. Um, the Climate Resilience, Resilience Plan outlines goals and strategies and actions to improve the community's uh, ability to respond to a variety of events. And their planned recommendations kind of really cover four kind of topic areas. They are people, planet, uh, place and partnership. And it's uh, interesting uh, work they've been doing. And I think our plan is to, to have them come before the city commission on the February first meeting. Um, and provide a, a report to you all on that. Uh, so Stormwater Master Plan, uh, y'all are well aware of what you all have recently accomplished on the Stormwater Master Plan. Um, master plan and ordinances have been adopted and approved. Um, just want to remind everybody that uh, in short order, we'll need to uh, bring forward a recommendation on a fee schedule and funding strategy for um, utility. And so we're still working on those details. And obviously, how we ultimately implement that stormwater fee you know, can affect um, the, the long-term capital improvement plan. In the original report, you know, where we provided the scenarios and, and the fee structure in there, that was based on the capital improvement program and having it completed in twenty, thirty years. And if we adjust how we go into the fee structure, that may or may not have impacted that. So we're working on that currently. And that's going to have to come back to you all. I would say Andrea, probably February, first of March. I mean, that's kind of when we normally do our fee setting, so. And that's, so that addresses the two items in the report. Obviously, there's a lot more that we've been working on as it relates to uh, climate action. Um, you know, Di- David Nifong has been working with the Environmental Sustainability Board and our solid waste division on a variety of projects. The waste characterization study, um, our kind of revamping of our recycling program to address problems and concerns with uh, plastic recycling. You know, some of the upcoming projects, as you all know, are working on the Clean Energy Plan, which is going to be spring, fall of 2021. Um, David and I have been working with A R C on their updates to grid, the Green Communities Program. Uh, we're currently, I believe, platinum. And A R C has now come out with a program, Climate Conscious Community Certification. And that really is um, taking the, the Green Community Certification to the next level and um, really honing in on some very specific areas and, and almost making, you know, holding cities accountable to ways in which they're making improvements uh, on energy use, conservation of resources. And um, because of the, the timing of that program, we would be implementing and working on things now um, to be prepared for a, I believe they accept applications once a year on that, which would be uh, 2022. Uh, we do anticipate working on, with a consultant on a, a more detailed waste characterization study. We did kind of a recycling audit. We took a, a truckload of our recyclables to Pratt and they inventoried the recyclables, uh, just because we were curious to understand uh, out of the recyclables that we collect. And what, what is it comprised of? But the waste characterization study would actually look at all aspects of our waste. We're looking at doing that March through May of 2021. Currently working on the R F P uh, for those professional services. We're also looking to purchase the heat sensor equipment to do our heat island uh, analysis. That's, we would be purchasing and installing those sensors hopefully this spring. And then working with a consultant on the analysis of the data uh, fall of 2021. Um, David's prepared. Andrea, I don't know how deep we want to go into these things. I'm happy to answer questions and talk about whatever people, you know, y'all are interested in. Um, but we've got a, as you all remember from last year, David and I have put together some really nice reports on, on statuses for his projects. Uh, he's also provided that again. I'm happy to share that. There's some interesting data in there as it relates to information that we've collected and reviewed and, and as it relates to the projects and statuses of our climate action work.
David, I can share that with the commissioners um, after we wrap up this afternoon. And then that might lead into conversations tomorrow for planning for 2021.
Yeah.
Great idea. Any other questions for David?
David, could you remind me, uh, please, what, what's the goal of this report back to us from the Agnes Scott Resilience Report? And how we'll benefit and take advantage of that information?
So, I mean, I, Mayor, I don't know if you want to speak to any of it too. I know that you've, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot. I know that you've had some conversations with, I believe, Susan Kidd as it relates to it. Really, it's kind of a, a collaboration um, on how this resiliency plan outlines the goals and strategies and actions to improve our ability to respond to things like um, the stressors on our community and how the city can respond to that. And uh, I've not seen the report. So, you know, once you get it, it, it's going to talk to topics like housing affordability. Uh, again, heat that, that we're already looking at. Uh, strategies to create a healthy and connected Decatur. So it's really, how can we as a, a community, you know, Agnes Scott's part of that um, and make the city, you know, more effective at, at responding to these stressors. Um, and again, like I said a minute ago, the four topic areas give you some idea of, of what they're looking at with people, planet, place and partnership. And I, I'm, I'm interested at seeing the report. Um, it doesn't sound like uh, from the, my report, updates from David and I found that that there's any speci- uh, specific request requirements or, you know, funding requirements uh, on this. It, it seems to me that the work that we're doing overall ultimately fits well within uh, you know, our climate action work, their climate action work, uh, that we're fairly in lockstep with one another on, on these efforts. And so it's really a um, kind of a joint plan on how we respond.
Agnes Scott reached out to us several years ago when they were really thinking about, you know, not do we need a sustainability plan, but instead we need a resilience plan, recognizing the impacts of uh, climate change, uh, recognizing other um, challenges to our community and sort of invited us to participate with them. And we've had members of the uh, Sustainability Board as well as David Nifong that have um, worked for a while on, on identifying um, those areas that there might be vulnerabilities and also areas, what can we do to um, improve our resiliency as a community? And one of the things that we found out with respect to like people, um, several years ago, when um, the city lost power and um, a number of sectors that we, we found out that Agnes Scott maybe had some resources and some power generators and backup that we weren't really aware of. And there had, had, that we need that cross-communication that we have it with the, with the city schools of Decatur and that, um, but that ability to uh, communicate and make, they have spaces perhaps where people could, could go and they had a, a place where people could go and um, uh, charge cell phones or have, um, and so the, kind of the recognition that uh, as um, as a community that um, includes a, a large campus right in the middle of it, of our city and, and the recognition that, that Agnes Scott really wants to um, wants to do things as a partner with the city of Decatur. And that has, we continue to have those discussions, not only with respect to um, resiliency, but Agnes Scott reached out during the pandemic and Linda and I, I have had some conversations with the, this is a, a goal of President Zach is to have Agnes Scott as a um, really a linchpin in our community and working on racial healing, working on, you know, what are ways that we can be mutually beneficial? And um, so we've been, this is separate from the resiliency plan, but we've been partnering and looking at Agnes Scott, you know, where are those partnerships now and what are potential partnerships? Having Renee in their uh, master's program in, in um, I guess, uh, communications, particularly dealing with uh, social media. And she's working with the uh, reconciliation and racial healing project at Agnes Scott. So there, um, this is one of those opportunities to partner with Agnes Scott. And again, it's where the summation of the whole is significantly greater than its parts. And I've known that the, the resiliency plan was in the works. It was like other things, the pandemic has taken its toll on the timing, but um, I look forward to seeing what's, what's presented. But that's a little bit of the history sort of behind it was uh, they were working on that. They, they decided that they could not be a resilient campus if they were operating in a vacuum, that they had to operate with, it had to be a, a part of a, a community effort and to partner with the city.
That makes a lot of sense. And thanks for going back into that history a little bit for me.
Sure.
Good. All right. We can move on to communication.
So this one will be very quick. Um, we did do the R F P for uh, communications audit. All of you, the city commission authorized us to, to um, hire Chandler Thinks, a company out of Tennessee, Chatted, I think, anyway, out of Tennessee. They have completed that audit. They have given us a preliminary, given the committee a preliminary report of their findings. And now they're working on their recommendations. I believe they're scheduled to have a work session with the city commission at the next meeting um, to present their, both their findings and their recommendations. I know that Renee met with them yesterday at three o'clock to hear their recommendations. And I have not heard from her. I keep checking to see. Um, but I think, I don't think you'll be surprised. I think they've done a very thorough job. And I commend uh, Renee for, for her work with it and for the team and for being um, open to looking at what's going on now and what, what, how we could make things better.
Thank you. All right. And it's Chandler Thinks?
Chandler Thinks.
All right. All one word?
Yep.
Okay.
Nashville, maybe. You're up in that area.
Yes, Nashville. Somewhere in T- in Tennessee. It's not Chattanooga, but yes.
I always think about Friends, like
Yeah.
Chandler going to present that?
It's a company, the, the person who, uh, Steve Chandler is the one that thought, that uh, started the company. So it's Chandler Thinks.
Chandler Thinks. And they're going to present that when? I know you just said
At the next commission meeting, um, Ju- Ju- January twentieth, nineteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteenth, January nineteenth.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts, questions? Moving right along. Economic development. Motion Loft Technology into work sessions.
All right. I'll, I'll jump in there. I, I think um, all of you remember the recent I T work session. And at that time, um, Russ Madison was giving that presentation and did uh, mention Motion Loft Technology and how uh, unfortunately, that company went bankrupt. Um, and so we are not presently using um, that technology. We continue to look for similar smart technology um, and would be presenting um, you know, that idea through the budget um, to maybe invest in another smart technology um, in our downtown area that's similar to what Motion Loft um, has presented. So at least it was within the I T work session. So it's a checkmark, but it's not the good news that we hope to have shared with you.
All right. And do you have a timing on that or not necessarily?
Well, it would just be part of um, the next budget work session that we would just kind of work um, that request into the budget.
Okay, okay, great. And then there would also be, there would be an I T work session. Excuse me. Um, probably this, a similar schedule, you know, Q four of this year um, to highlight that, that type of technology, smart, you know, smart city technology, as well as highlighting um, all of our technology initiatives. Okay.
And, and Kelly, just to kind of branch off why we kind of put it under the bucket of economic development is that we were really wanting to use this technology to show um, both the pedestrian and uh, um, bicycle counts um, as we continue to install um, the cycle tracks throughout our downtown um, to show that, you know, folks are, are using that. Um, and then also, you know, we do have some new developments in our downtown as well. And we wanted to um, document, you know, how people are using those sidewalks and how many and um, what times of day and, and, and of course, the um, the cyclist as well. Um, and, and it all kind of ties back to economic development. It's like, you know, as we built out our, our downtown, because we had um, eight of those uh, you know, kind of technology components um, up on poles um, to, to just document that over time. Um, and I'm, I'm kind of pointing to the, the Callaway development um, uh, as one example to sh- because we had that technology in place prior to the development, um, you know, taking shape. Um, and so, you know, to have, to have those counts in the, in the after um, effects, I guess, of the development, I, just to show that before and after um, of, of how we're making improvements and the effectiveness of those. So.
Yeah, thank you. Impact themes?
Sure. Again, um, just for those that are maybe watching, you know, this project this project kicked off in October of 2020. The Advisory Committee, as you all know, was approved October 19th, 2020. The Advisory Committee met in November the 13th, 2020. You all just recently conducted the first public hearing on December 21st, 2020. The study period is is wrapping up. The consultant team and Advisory Committee is looking at developing the capital improvement element of the project. It includes the methodology report. Later this spring, they'll actually work on developing the ordinance, the impact fee ordinance. The Advisory Committee has a second meeting scheduled for January the 28th, 2021 at 4:00 PM via Zoom. They'll also schedule meetings for February, March. They but they hope to have the actual impact fee program and presentation to you all by the end of the fiscal year, May, June of 2021.
All right, David, so in all of that, what is the bottom line update you'd like for me to record?
Well, I mean, obviously organizing and developing the the ordinance itself, creating the impact fee this spring.
And David, I'd anticipate a work session during that time, too.
Andrea, David, quick question. So given all this, do we see any potential hurdles facing us as we move towards implementation and adoption?
Well, I mean, I would say there would likely be input from particular groups within the development community on ultimately, you know, the pros and cons of developing an impact fee program. I think as we move forward in having additional public input, I think we'll have you know, representatives from a variety of groups that that step forward and and have, you know, an opinion on the benefits of or not of an impact fee.
I've got thoughts about that, but I guess I can save them for the work session.
Other thoughts, questions?
This is capturing what we accomplished this last year, right?
Yes, for all, yes. Yeah, basically, yeah, basically, looking back and and giving a status, a little bit less about about next steps.
Yeah. So whatever we imprint here probably looks like we're about halfway through the process, right?
Right.
I guess that's that's how it reflects to me. Engage the consultant. Right. Had a work session. We have the state mandated task force in in meeting progress. And then we're kind of going to go into the second half of the work this year.
Correct. All right, all right, right, yeah, we achieved what we set out to do in 2020. But there's that that was just the beginning of the project.
Fantastic. All right. Legacy Park?
Let's see, we are actually publishing our RFP for in place in basic plant control in the next week or so. We've had it, at least the scope of services has been reviewed by the Environmental Sustainability Board. And I think the Lynn Mini indicated that she had discussed this with the Legacy Board. At least I I think you know about it. I'm not sure how much detail she went into. Anyway, it's a this will be a multi-year project to remove invasives which are rampant in the wooded area of Legacy Park. It will generally, I would say, follow the you know, kind of process that is used at Fernbank Forest for invasive control. And will probably depend on a good bit of the fund from the grant from the DeKalb County we've received for the use in the conservation easement area of the property.
Have any goats submitted their statements of interest?
No, no goats yet. That would be that could be a that could be a an element. I think there will be a range of opportunities for different types of invasive control. The problem with goats is, of course, is they they will eat anything. And so if you're trying to sort of preserve the woodland, they will eat the next generation of.
Saplings? Trees, yeah.
Right, but I, you know, to the extent we can do it, we will probably be relying on mechanical removal and some limited use of herbicides. But again, just following, I've had several good conversations with the folks at Fernbank. They've had good success at what they've done and, you know, a good model for our our approach.
Is there any place for community support there?
That'll be, what we're looking at is probably trying to have at least several times a year, have, you know, a we would we would anticipate that the contractor or the contracting team, could be a contracting team really, would make use of volunteers several times during the year, maybe as often as once a month. And, you know, a little on the Trees Atlanta model, you know. But that would be not only for invasive removal, but environmental education and, you know, good, good, good opportunity for community support.
Agreed. I think there's a healthy appetite in the community to to support that.
Well, that's a good way to work out your frustrations. Pull Ivy. The we won't give them machetes, though. That will not be part of the of the plan. And that the the second item there is actually something we were looking at last year is either something to marry up with a contractor for invasive plant control at Legacy or possibly consider employing a urban naturalist to manage that process. And they they could be, they could, they're not incompatible, there is some some overlap. But we we decided, I guess, we were considering this during the budget season last year and decided we were not gonna employ or at least create new positions for the budget. Andrea may have other thoughts on that, but I think that's how we kind of came down. This is all sort of a number of things that we were on this list were impacted by the pandemic, which hit, you know, six weeks, really about six weeks after this was published. So and that's something that, again, we could consider. I think there are, you know, we don't, we don't, we have Legacy Park, we have Eden Cove Park, we have Buren Park, we have a number of properties, got cemetery, and then there are a number of, you know, natural areas in the city of Decatur that would that would be, could could use more management than they're getting professional management and have some have some similar, you know, similar invasive challenges that Legacy has, it's just the biggest one and the the one we have the most. We actually have a fund that we can use for it. But there are, I mean, there are, there would be an advantage, I think, to considering, when we get into the budget season, considering a position where you would have a city employee who could not only manage the Legacy project, but also, you know, similar natural areas throughout the city. Then there are, most of these are city owned. We the trail system, we did, we mentioned that, I mentioned that earlier, did improve, have a cross-country course is doubles as a trail at Legacy Park for pedestrians, walkers. And that was completed last last fall. The the there is a trail, a different sort of trail that we're, I believe, gonna be building this spring, connecting up the Tally Street School with Legacy Park. So extending the first phase of the South Columbia Trail from from Tally Street School all the way down to Legacy Park. And there'll be opportunities for other trail improvements, you know, at Legacy as we get further into it.
Okay, good, good, good. Anything else you want captured regarding the trail system or trail improvements, or that those are, it sounds like ongoing?
It doesn't necessarily relate to that, but we also signed a management agreement with the Legacy Project Board. That happened in 2020 for the day-to-day maintenance of Legacy Park.
You want that captured?
Yes, please.
Please.
And what did you call that? You you signed the agreement with the management company or just the management?
The Decatur Leg- Decatur Legacy Project.
Well, yeah. All right. Traffic signal study?
David, you're muted.
You're muted, we can't hear you.
That sounds better that way. So we have not moved forward with the traffic signal study. Hugh, chime in anytime you want, but we have been moving forward with GDOT and their consultants on the overall signal project update for the city of Decatur. I know that we've been talking about that for many, many years. But that project is is actively moving forward.
Is there a timetable?
On the signal upgrade?
10 years ago?
I actually talked to our former senior engineer, Michelle Harose, yesterday about another matter. And she she said it had been moved out another 18 months or so. So we're probably looking at 2024. Mainly for mainly because of the difficulty in purchasing right away and which is a tedious process. Every intersection where there's a signal, there's usually you gotta get three or four little pieces of property to where you set your new mast arms. And it's made especially difficult during, you know, the pandemic. But that's that's what they told me was that it had been moved out.
The silver lining in it, I would think, is because of the aging aspect of this ongoing project, they've actually updated their plans and and whatnot consistent with recent work done by the city to make sure that the signal upgrade that are being proposed at a variety of intersections is reflective of work that we've been doing ongoing. Just to give you an example, during our Tally Street School traffic study, you know, we we believe that there are several improvements that need to take place at Commerce and East College Avenue. And so we've developed some kind of concepts related to lane realignments, also obviously incorporating dedicated turn signals. And not all of that was in the original signal upgrade 15 years ago. But because of the work that we've been doing and as they've come back to us, they've been updating their plans to be consistent with work that we're we're doing. So I think that is a good thing that they're not implementing, not necessarily going to implement a, you know, aged plan, but they are revisiting those to make sure that they are what they need to be for today's environment.
What would you like captured here as the update?
I guess I want to hear from the commission before before we take our next step to make sure that that the desire to evaluate the traffic signal operations is that's still an expectation for for us to move forward on that. There there would be some value in having having that assessment performed, with that evaluation performed.
Could we also look at it in conjunction with, say, stop signs and crosswalks? Could that be a bigger part or is that too broad in scope?
What would you be looking for from that?
Well, so, you know, I just recently just got a email about a situation for a possible four-way stop. I know the situation on North Superior at North Decatur keeps creeping back into the discussion. So there seems to be, you know, three or four things. I know we talked about our, you know, big traffic study a couple of years ago. So there just seems seem to be some things that continue to sort of creep back into the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a little more intentionally narrow because it is the 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 traffic signal system and the particular system that, you know, that that we do not own or operate. Obviously, we do, you know, contract with a third party to make some upgrades and adjustments to it. And what we're looking, we're looking for, you know, and and evaluation of of the the traffic signal system that exists today. And I think one is kind of giving us a snapshot of, you know, what is there? You know, identifying the relationship that we have with the county and the the third party that works with the county to make some, you know, some minor upgrades to it, but really taking that a little bit further you know, some minor upgrades to it, but really taking that a little bit further, um, to assess, um, the different, you know, different scenarios, kind of they do nothing. Um, and, you know, you're leave it as is, and, you know, also explore, you know, what would it look like? Um, I think this is what we're, we're kind of talking about and jumping into, like, what would it look like if the sys- if the city took over the ownership and operation, um, of the system? And so from a, you know, budget standpoint, you know, what that would mean from, you know, capital budget, um, you know, day-to-day, uh, you know, day-to-day operations budget? Or is there, you know, you know, or is there any kind of scenario, you know, in between there? But, um, I would say that we would need to keep, I would keep, I would recommend to keep the focus on, um, on the, the tra- the traffic signals, um, something that we currently don't control, unlike the, um, other intersections with, you know, with stop signs, you know, we've, we've got, um, you know, we have the authority already to, and to do, you know, traffic studies at individual intersections and, you know, make a decision, yeah, using, you know, engineering standards of whether or not stop signs or other, um, uh, you know, devices, traffic control devices need to go in.
If, if I- If I could add to that, Andrea, um, you know, when we think about the signalized intersections and crosswalks and, um, you know, the, the pedestrian signals, oh, the majority of those are within our downtown. I'm not saying all of them, but the majority of them are within our downtown. And we could build that into the scope of the downtown master plan and, and make that, um, you know, a part of the, you know, maybe prepare an audit as part of that, um, preparation of the, of the, of the master plan. So I'll just offer that up as, as an idea of where we can kind of, um, you know, park that idea and build that into some of our planning efforts.
And if I jump in, I, I think that's a great suggestion. I was going to say, um, traffic and pedestrian safety are two really big issues in Decatur, particularly the downtown area. They are going to be a huge part of that downtown master plan. So I do think we should take whatever steps we need to do, as Mr. Redgill said, to prepare for that master plan so we can, um, tackle those challenges in, in informed manner. So I don't know what the answer to your question is, Ms. Arnold, but it's a short answer is, these are really two big issues for people, you know, in Decatur, people driving through downtown or walking through downtown. And if this effort will help us find a solution, or at least improve the status quo, um, then I would strongly encourage us to continue to invest in that space.
And I like the idea of marrying those two up, um, you know, obviously not at the, not at the exclusion of the, the system or the signal outside of the downtown. Um, but no, I think that's a, a great opportunity, um, and maybe to, um, have a, you know, little, we, ex- extra attention to the, you know, the pedestrian safety, uh, concerns, um, specific to the downtown, uh, when we do the master plan.
All right.
I agree with what's been said up till now, um, today. And the discussion last year was about, we believe that having this ownership could put us in a position to have a safer, even car, pedestrian, all-user environment. But obviously with a focus on our, uh, pedestrian, walking, walkability environment. So we believe that to be true. And then we, what we don't know is, can we afford it? Can we handle it? And what are the mechanics behind that? So I, I do think it's still worth investigation, and it's a really heavy lift, but it's, it's critical to what we believe we want to be able to do to support our, our network, our transportation network in the city.
And I think we may have talked a little bit, um, last year about the, um, you know, the various, you know, the smart city technology, or just the technologies that exist, um, that, you know, that cur- you know, currently we're not able to take advantage of, uh, you know, with the traffic signals, um, and the, um, the pedestrian crossings that, again, like Kelly, Commissioner Walsh says, you know, we, we believe that to be true, um, if we had ownership, there could be some potential for taking advantage of these technologies that, you know, that, that they exist. And they've actually been around for a few years now, um, that we're not, uh, we're not seeing, um, in use in our community.
And, and to chime in specifically, where we stop traffic in all directions and allow pedestrians to own the intersection, which I think you installed, we installed, um, at Vermont and Ponce. And we talked about several other intersections around downtown, but that might make some sense.
We're, we're working on, I mean, so regarding the smart technologies, uh, you know that we incorporated some of that into the Tally Street signal, using, uh, flare technology for pedestrian detection, where they don't have to push a button. And I'm working, I've got some pricing that potentially we can consider in the next fiscal year, uh, budget request to, um, implement at additional intersections. It's not, not a small number, um, but it does address some of those concerns. So, uh, stay tuned for seeing some of that. Uh, I do, so my, my belief as we move forward with that really was a pride, this traffic signal study project really focused on understanding the signal system we have. The, you know, the age of the infrastructure that's there. Potentially, if we can ever get them upgraded, obviously we'll have new equipment, uh, new infrastructure, and what it would mean for the city to take that over and own it, uh, the pros and cons of, of, oh, city ownership. As it relates to how the system currently operates, I mean, we would handle those as, as we already do. Um, whether we initiate the project and work with the CAB or GDOT on implementing a project, we can continue working on those like we have.
I wanted to go back and ask, um, just a quick question, not from some of the, uh, things that Mr. Saxon said about, if I remember correctly, there was money allocated for signal upgrades in the, in Deca- well, in every city in DeKalb County. And, um, I don't remember if that went to GDOT or how that was supposed to be dispersed. And I, I think we are, um, the last city by far to have anything, um, come from that. And is, is that what you were referring to with, with Michelle in terms of the signalization upgrade of, that, um, we, we are supposed to have provided through, through some of that funding?
Yes, ma'am. That, that, that's actually a GDOT project. That is a, uh, that's a, uh, uh, project that will be, uh, uh, paid for and implemented by the Department of Transportation, either, e- even though, uh, number of, uh, signals will be on city streets. Uh, I knew there were forty-three intersections that were going to be, uh, upgraded with new, you know, new, uh, uh, mast arms, new signals, new, uh, 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 traffic, uh, controllers, um, what's called the cabinets. And, uh, that's, uh, that is, uh, going to be, uh, so, uh, the way that was going to work was, GDOT was going to build it and, uh, DeKalb County is acquiring the right-of-way. And that's, that's what we were talking about. And we are the last one. I mean, they, uh, they, so they number these projects, uh, and, uh, this particular project is, uh, it's got, I believe it's called, it's, uh, two-six-six-nine, so they're now, they're into the sixteen thousands of project numbers. So it's, it's, I, I don't know if it's the oldest in this GDOT, uh, system, but it's definitely right up there.
So is this, is the slowdown from the county not, um, being able to acquire the right-of-way?
That appears to be the main, uh, impediment.
Which I think has been, the, that has, that has to take place first before any of the rest of this can, I mean, any of the rest of, or GDOT's work can take place.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. So then what I heard in that is that we do want to continue to investigate signal operations, um, but to do that as a part of the downtown master plan. Good. All right. I want to pause this for a sec.
Can I chime in? Is that right, or was there a thought that we would need to do some preparation for the downtown master plan? I wasn't sure what Mr. Redgill had proposed.
I was just going to park that idea because I know that we're still talking about the 2020, um, priorities, but maybe we can, um, you know, maybe add that to the 2021, uh, discussion, if that's all right.
Great. Yep. I will make sure we do that. Good. Right. So I want to do a time check because from what I was told, two-thirty was the end of our day. Is that correct? Everybody's still looking at two-thirty? We've got, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, six more, um, subject areas to talk about. So we can move through them. Whatever we don't finish, we can look at tomorrow. But I think we might be able to get these done. You guys tell me.
I'm good with pushing through if y'all are. Y'all speak up if not.
Good? Okay. All right. Okay. Tree canopy protection ordinance.
So we start.
Go ahead.
Okay, we started this, uh, had a, a pretty good start on it last, uh, after the, uh, meeting last year. Unfortunately, uh, uh, this has been, uh, sidetracked pretty much by the pandemic. Uh, and, uh, lost a key employee as well, uh, which, uh, really hurt our effort. Uh, the, uh, the, so we, uh, got a, uh, I did, we did do a, uh, uh, the, the start included reorganizing and simplifying the ordinance, uh, uh, and really getting it ready to, uh, uh, look at some of the, uh, different, uh, standards we had been using, uh, which would include, uh, uh, considering, uh, uh, a site review prior to submission of a plan. Uh, this primarily, uh, single-family, uh, dwellings. Uh, this is already done. Uh, we already do a preliminary site review, uh, uh, infrastructure review when, uh, uh, commercial or multifamily, uh, developments take place. But this would, uh, be required, at least considering require that, requiring that for a single-family home. Uh, looking at ways to limit, uh, site disturbance and grading, uh, increasing, uh, the, uh, canopy, the minimum canopy to be saved on, uh, uh, each, uh, property, improving boundary-free protection, limiting, uh, uh, canopy requirements to, uh, trees that are on-site, rather than sharing that with, uh, neighboring properties. Uh, identifying and providing, uh, uh, additional protection for trees of significant value, uh, possibly increasing fines for, uh, uh, tree loss. Um, and, um, that, uh, hopefully will be something we can, uh, uh, continue with, uh, uh, soon. I would say generally, uh, we've lost probably about a year. So, uh, uh, to just, uh, uh, my thinking would be that we, uh, again, complete the ordinance, uh, in, by, uh, the, into the second quarter and have it, uh, to the commissioners, uh, for consideration in the third quarter. That will also actually allow us to, um, uh, see what, uh, uh, recommendations come out of the strategic plan, whether there are impacts related to our affordable housing policies. I know we've already, uh, 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 implemented a, uh, credit, uh, process in the, uh, our stormwater master plan for tree protection. Um, and, uh, the, uh, we are presently, uh, we have a canopy, uh, study, a tree canopy study underway, which, uh, we will be, uh, actually expecting, uh, uh, at least preliminary, uh, uh, findings, uh, this, this month. Uh, and are, will be scheduling a, this will be primarily done, uh, using, uh, aerial, uh, uh, photography over a ten-year, uh, uh, timeframe, uh, from, uh, I guess, two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen. Um, and, uh, so we'll be able to see the changes that have taken place over that period. Uh, and we'll be, uh, uh, trying to, uh, schedule later this month, a, uh, uh, ground truthing, uh, exercise with members of the Environmental Sustainability Board to go out and look at sites that our consultants, uh, select, uh, and, uh, to determine, uh, how, uh, uh, at least try to, how accurate the, uh, uh, aerial photography is in, in identifying, uh, the, the, uh, loss of canopy or the increase of canopy.
Great. So if I hear that correctly, Hugh, um, what I'm hearing you say is that the revising the ordinance is really moved out to this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we think we'll be able to present it for adoption by third quarter of 2021?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thoughts, questions?
Kelly, very quickly, I would love to add this to our agenda for 2021 items to discuss tomorrow, simply because we've gotten a lot, I personally have gotten a lot of community-based feedback about the anticipated tree canopy ordinance changes. And I think it definitely warrants a group discussion so that we can really, um, you know, have specific asks to take when, um, Hugh and team start working on that ordinance.
Perfect. I have that on the list.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So then for now, we'll move to the next one. Ebsster facility improvements?
Uh, the, we looked at this last year and, uh, uh, actually, uh, we're considering a budget, uh, request for, uh, funding for this project. And again, I think we were, uh, the budget, our, all our budget decisions last year were pretty conservative, uh, because of the pandemic. Uh, and something, uh, again, Andrea may have some, uh, thoughts about this, but it's certainly, certainly something we could consider, uh, uh, during the budget process for fiscal, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two.
And, um,
I was just going to say, it's, you're looking, it, for the field work, you're looking at something, somewhere between a million, a million and a half dollars, uh, for Ebsster Field. Uh, the, uh, lighting would be, uh, uh, you know, probably, uh, half a million. We have not talked to the Housing Authority about, uh, uh, lighting for the, for the project. But we could do that, uh, you know, based on, uh, what our, uh, you know, field proposal will be.
And, and he was correct. We, uh, we did discuss it during the, the budget session, our, our, our capital planning session, um, this past year. And, um, we were con- we were conservative. I mean, I will just, you know, paint the, the reality picture is that, um, you know, the capital improvements fund budget, there's about two and a half million dollars, um, that's available for capital expenditures, and about a million of that goes for, um, for LMIG, for the, um, the annual paving project. And in this year's budget, there's about another million for sidewalk, um, sidewalk construction. And we, you know, we also, we dipped into, or dipping into fund balance for all of the other capital projects. Um, part of that being some debt service that we pay. Um, and we, and we, at the, the budget, um, it had us going down to under a hundred thousand dollars, ending up at fund balance. And so there wasn't a million and a half or two million dollars, um, you know, remaining for another large capital project. However, uh, we did end up at a much better, um, fund balance position at the end of last year. And so I do believe that, um, you know, that if there is a, you know, a willingness to, to dip into the fund balance, again, this is the type of project, uh, that I would consider to be appropriate to use fund balance for. Um, I, I definitely, I, I think that it's, um, you know, it- I, I definitely, I, I think that it's, you know, it is something that, you know, we, we are going to consider it, again, in our capital planning. And I, and I believe that our, you know, the, the funding available, or there may be, looks like there is funding available for this type of project. And I just need to see what other competing projects are out there in terms of, you know, the various, especially sidewalk and street paving and, and some complete streets projects.
But it is on the list. Great. So we'll keep it on the list. And we've got it, I think, on the list for, for 2021 as a part of budget considerations.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, there's not a chance at having this completed by third quarter this year?
I think that is safe to say because, I mean, it's not in the current year's budget. So it would be, you know, the earliest, earliest that there would be funding would be in July of this year. And so that was when, that's when we would, you know, kick off the, 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 the planning process. And Hugh may be, I mean, Hugh's more tuned to the, you know, the steps that we'll have to take, you know, in terms of, you know, getting the, getting proposals and, you know, making, you know, vetting, making recommendations. But I would look at, I, I, I wouldn't, Hugh, do you think, I mean, would it be 2022?
I would think it would be in calendar 2022.
Right. We could see the, you know, dirt being moved.
Third quarter this year was not arbitrary. You gotta let a girl dream. In my perfect world, the users can use Boys, Boys and Girls Club field while this gets done. So we don't really have displaced, you know, athletes and users and all, all the folks that we'd like to keep moving on that field, which I think is a great spot to be in now too. And with everybody going back to school, ideally in the fall. But I understand the budget constraints. I, I just want us to be as comfortably uncomfortable as we can with moving this forward as, as fast as we can. I think it's waiting there for us as a great opportunity for, for our whole city to benefit from it.
I would also like to request that, you know, the, I guess, the conversations with the Housing Authority happen as quickly as possible so that we know sort of, get them involved on the front end of the process.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So next, downtown master plan.
Yes, I, I think we all know that we have not been able to quite get to the downtown master plan. One of the reasons being is that we are still waiting to wrap up the strategic plan, which will help a little bit inform the downtown master plan. I think for our timing now, it, it just feels like we're like a year on delay. So, you know, we're probably looking at quarter three, quarter four of 2021 at this point. And given how much we've already talked about the downtown master plan today, I definitely see this being a discussion point for, for tomorrow.
Yeah. All right, it will be. Any other comments? Public art ordinance.
So I think for, for this one, we were originally looking at developing an ordinance that would require developments of a certain size or a certain type to incorporate public art into their project. And we are going to be looking at researching, you know, ordinances from other communities that already have one in place and kind of learn from what they've done and develop our own. We have not had a chance to work on this yet. We would be working closely with the Arts Alliance in, in helping develop that ordinance as well. But again, I think we're looking at quarter three, quarter four of 2021 to actually get into this topic, if it, if it is still of importance to the City Commission.
What do you all think?
I brought it up myself and we talked about it and we left it in kind of this experimental, open, open-ended framework. In the hierarchy of needs, you know, where does it rank? I think we're clear that we have a lot of really important stuff to get caught up on. However, we also have some, we still have development coming and pressing and places where we could take advantage of this if it were in place. So, you know, waiting creates opportunities that we could, could miss. So I have a lot of respect for the fact that the staff has limited bandwidth and I'd like to keep it on the list and press it out to later this year if the staff is comfortable with that, unless there's objections by my colleagues and definitely tell me your, your rationale, but.
That sounds good to me. I think you're right. In the hierarchy of needs, it, it's probably not on the same plane as some other things, but I'd like to see it still considered.
Ditto.
I guess when we do the, the Monday morning quarterbacking and the places where we've had wins on art, I think are some of the most satisfying things we've done. So I don't want to, you know, eliminate this from the conversation. And I appreciate that we could keep it up here to continue the conversation and continue to contemplate it in. And I think we'll know when is the right time to jump on it.
Right. Noise ordinance.
All right. Not all at once, folks.
Something, not something we have gotten to yet.
Also, I think this might also be on our list to talk about tomorrow, I believe. And I think it came across initially, the reference was to, and I think it, it started with a conversation around leaf blowers. I may have massaged that language for tomorrow's discussion to lawn equipment. And I, and I think it's broader than the noise ordinance. I think it also is related to environmental impacts as well. Obviously, noise isn't an environmental impact, but I also think from a pollution standpoint. So we can talk about it in more detail tomorrow, but it is on the, the work program for a staff in the City Manager's Office. But I, I would like for us to delve into this a little bit more tomorrow so I can make sure that we've got very clear direction before we start going too far down the road with this.
I agree. I would like for this, for us to have that discussion tomorrow. I think many of us have heard from folks in our community, particularly during the pandemic, when you are, you know, doing everything remotely and, you know, I got an email from somebody who was recording from inside her home. The, the three competing leaf blowers in her neighborhood. And so I, I think there is, but I think we have to pay attention also to the impact on the, the, the people who are using those lawn service equipment. And so I think we, we need to have that conversation. So thank you.
Great. We've got it on the list.
All right.
All right. Neighborhood Planning Committee.
Well, again, I, I think that falls to me in, in terms of the research and we just have not had the, the time in our Planning and Zoning Division to really look into, you know, having a neighborhood planning committee, how that would function in the city of Decatur and where, you know, which, which staff or, you know, who would take the leadership in that particular role. So I'm thinking, you know, again, probably quarter four of 2021. Again, if that's still important to the City Commission to look into that.
Well, what do you all think? Is it still important?
That's another one I brought up earlier last year. And I put this out there. I think it speaks to potentially answering some of the questions that Commissioner Meyer brought up at the last meeting in December that are places where the community has questions and concerns and maybe seeking places to insert themselves into conversations about how our community is growing and changing, densifying, whatever you want to call it. So that was an area of interest I had for finding ways to help the community be, be engaged, be stakeholders and help make decisions on, on even more of a front end. And if that's a model that could work for us, you know, we could, we could experiment and look at how that works. But it does take that pre-work to, to test it.
Other thoughts?
I haven't lived anywhere for this long as an adult to kind of have had it or not have it. I know a lot of other cities use this as a, as a tool for planning and development and, and community engagement, but we just don't happen to have it.
George, you're muted if you're talking.
David Atlanta has NPU system. There are 24 of them. That comes out to like a little more than 20,000 for each NPU, which is almost the size of Decatur. I mean, it's interesting because I would like to see them, opportunity for neighborhood, neighbors to be more engaged in, in the planning process. But then there also is the interaction then with, you know, the ZBA and, and, and the other one, the planning group, so.
And maybe we start with identifying the goal as opposed to, you know, saying that the end product would be a neighborhood planning committee, maybe just identify, this is what we're trying to achieve. And then your staff would do the research to determine what's the best mechanism for that. So to be less prescriptive on the front end, maybe a little more, a little more open.
Yeah, I think I would argue almost this is, I, I said, I want to talk about just overall development within the city. I think that this is part of that conversation in terms of people in the community often feeling caught off guard when development proposals come forward and then not knowing how to engage in the process. And so I think, and maybe I'm not sure if that's where you were looking for, but for me, this, this sense of our residents having a better understanding of what our plans are, what our zoning is, what currently is out there that could happen. And how they fit in with that conversation is, right, what I would want to get out of this from my perspective.
And what I'm hearing is that to move it to 2021 and step one is to really identify the goal of the planning committee. What you're wanting to achieve.
Now, I think it's not assuming that there's a planning committee. It's just, I mean, what is it that, what's, what's the goal of this item? I mean, what, and then determine, is that a planning committee? You know, Commissioner Dusenberry mentions, you know, Atlanta has the NPUs, the Neighborhood Planning Units, which I think that's kind of the equivalent of what we're saying here, committee. But maybe just back, backing up, before we say, we need this construct, you know, what, you know, what exactly, or, you know, other, other ways. I mean, that might be the way, but are there, what is it that we're trying to achieve? You know, here, Commissioner Dusenberry say, you know, people who live here, you know, within their neighborhoods, you know, need to have, you know, a better understanding of, you know, what are, what are the plans, you know, that exist in the city today that, you know, that will potentially have an impact on what gets developed? You know, on these pieces of land. You know, what are the plans? You know, what is the zoning? I mean, again, just because, you know, there's a single family house on that property, maybe that doesn't mean it's zoned, single family, you know. And people being surprised when a multifamily housing development, you know, is able to be built, you know, with very little, you know, perhaps, you know, very few hearings or public input because that's what the plans that were developed, you know, years ago allow, you know, will allow today. And is there a way for people, and I, are we going for, you know, are we going further? Is it, you know, is it beyond information? And are we looking for people, you know, to actually have some, you know, or is it influence over that, you know, different than the decisions that are being made by the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals? You know, people who have been appointed, you know, with very specific charges and actually, you know, you know, you know, legal, you know, you know, guidance for their decision-making.
So what I'll add at this point is, it, it is about potentially adding architecture where there is a, a more structured place for this conversation. Because I think what I've observed is that we will, we need to rely on organically a conversation generated ideally by a neighborhood association or an HOA or a community stakeholder group that sometimes doesn't get assembled for lots of reasons. Or that, or those groups be connected by the proactive outreach of the builder developer, landowner. That always, that doesn't always happen either. It's encouraged. Sometimes it happens. And it also happens in a fragmented kind of buckshot format. So if this added architecture, infrastructure and, and a system to formalize that and make it a better process for, for the community so they're aware earlier and have more decision-making input, that's, that's where I'm headed with this.
So I feel like we've, we've captured it. It definitely takes more conversation. And it is to move that whole conversation to figure out the best, the best infrastructure or architecture for it, for what we're trying to achieve.
Great. Anything else to be said about that? Woo-hoo, you got through the list. Yay, isn't that great?
This is the easy part.
So tomorrow comes the hard part. And I just want to do a quick little flash. Other than what we've already talked about moving, let me see if I can stop. And there. Okay. So what I, what we get to do tomorrow is to look at the list of topics for next year, for 2021. If you don't mind, give me a second and I'll make this big for you. So here are the topics that we have. The strategic plan, affordable housing, budget projections and limitations, capital projects and prioritization such as Eppster Field, communication strategy, which we began to talk about today. Development, which includes UDO updates, zoning, land use, urban planning, educational activities, impact fees as always, Legacy Park, the noise ordinance, which we mentioned, pool options year round, Boys and Girls Club, seniors, issues regarding seniors, senior school tax exemption, other exemptions, stormwater fees, options, transportation priorities for 2021, and the tree ordinance. So this is the list that we have so far. Is there anything that we haven't mentioned previously in 2020 that you feel like, oh, we need to put that on the list for tomorrow as well?
Do you want to talk anymore about the Clean Energy Plan or, or, again, I'll send you that information that David Nifong sent, but I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't, that wasn't lost. Obviously, we know that we're working on it, but I think that will be, it's going to be a, a lot of, a lot of our work, staff and community-wise, you know, with the, and the ESP.
That would be helpful, I think. Yeah, if we could add that to the list.
Okay, great. Clean Energy Plan. What else?
I think it's going to be a push to get through all this tomorrow, so. So is there a thought of ranking? I know we typically go through and rank at the end, but do we want to rank the order of the discussion tomorrow? So if we run short on time, we put some of these things to maybe our later time down the road. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open.
So I'm gonna jump in, I hate to rude, I actually need to run to prep for three o'clock that I scheduled, but I thought would be closing up a little earlier. So I'm, I'm, you know, I appreciate where Tony's going with this, just, yeah, I, I don't know. I don't have the conversation hour later, but I probably need to run. So my, 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 my prep call is, is bugging me. So, yeah.
All right, so trust us if we go ahead and prioritize without you, George, we've got.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thanks, George. See you in the morning.
Bye-bye. Anyone want to say, hey, here's the most important thing?
Well, I would just say that if there are topics that we've got for discussion that don't really require any decisioning, that we move those to the bottom. So if there's not a decision that we need to make or a recommendation that needs to be made about the strategic plan or about impact fees or about, I don't know, anything else that's like that, that was more of an update and less of a, of a discussion to gear toward a decision, I would suggest moving those to the end. I, I was looking at the same thing. It's easier almost to, can we pick things to move off of the top of the list and kind of move down a little bit instead of saying, this is priority one, two, three, four, so.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm assuming that the, the pool options would fall to the bottom since there is a pool at the Boys and Girls Club. I wasn't sure if there was another conversation around that, but.
How about the postal pond project? I would separate that out from the facilities and maybe green space master plan conversation.
Right. My facilities and green space master plan is broader than legacy park for sure.
Yep.
All right, so we'll separate.
We're not moving postal pond down, are we?
That's not what I.
Were we putting it in a separate category? Or do you want facilities and green space as the category?
I think they need to be separated personally.
I think those are two different things. I would agree.
So keep, yeah, legacy park, postal pond project is one. And then the other one is facilities and green space master plan. And I don't, I don't, I don't believe that either one of those are getting put to the bottom though.
And if we're going to have another work session on impact fees, maybe we can move that down to the, towards the bottom since we know where we're headed.
Same with communication strategy. If we're having a work session on that in the next few weeks, we can discuss that in our work session.
Well, that's what I was going to say because we don't really have the recommendations yet. So we don't really know what we're discussing. We know it's important, but you don't really have a decision to make yet.
But yeah, you'll see that in about a week and a half.
Good, good. So so far for discussion, which means bottom of the, bottom of the list, I've got communication strategy, impact fees, pool options.
And let me go back to communication strategy. Because I, I think I, I just made an assumption that we're talking about what would be coming out of the communications audit. Now, if there are other, if there are other issues with communication, be that internal, you know, among these, you know, sat, you know, staff in the commission or with the public that, that it may not be captured by, you know, kind of the traditional communications audit. I just want to make sure that that's not getting pushed to the side. So for, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, I didn't want to make an assumption.
Okay, so I'll make sure we split that into two different sections. Okay.
All right. Strategic plan, is that for discussion or decision? Well, I know they're all for discussion, but is that something that needs a decision?
I don't think so.
Think so.
Okay, great. All right. So then affordable housing.
If you're asking me, it should stay at the top of the list.
Well, good thing we asked you. Right? Okay, great. Budget projections, definitely that, that needs to stay at the top of the list, I would imagine. Okay, good. Capital.
Quickly, if I could jump in, if the city manager had something she really wants us to know and learn and understand upfront on budget production, projections, limitations, I would take that as a level set upfront tomorrow because it could very much inform how we attack the rest of the list, how hard we want to drive and, or if we just are going to have some practical realities. But if it's, if it's more of color commentary about it, that's different. You may be telling us there's just stuff we're not going to be able to do.
Well, I still think that the, the, the budget conversation can, can kind of set the tone for the rest of the, rest of the meeting. And so I, I would like the opportunity just to kind of give a, you know, a, a mini, really mini financial report, just so you, you can make sure that you're, you're, you're making some decisions and, and having thoughts within the, these financial parameters. So. Okay, yeah, nothing, there's nothing to be alarmed, you know, there's nothing to be alarmed about, but I just feel like there is some information kind of at this mid-year, mid-year point, mid fiscal year that could be valuable as, as the commission, you know, looks at these projects and, you know, understands the, you know, that they are, you know, they're competing for limited resources. Okay, great. We'll keep that one at the top of the list and let you kick us off with it tomorrow, Andrea. Capital projects and prioritization, I would assume that should be fairly high up.
I would think so. I think that since, especially since we didn't get, we weren't able to give it as much attention last year, that we should provide it with a little extra focus this year.
Okay, great. Development, UDO updates?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then legacy park? Middle of the list or we're, at this point.
I'd say middle of the list, maybe.
We are in the middle. Okay. And then facilities, green space, middle of the list? Okay. Noise ordinance.
Up towards the top, maybe?
Okay, okay, all right. I'll move that up.
And although George isn't here, I feel like I should say that facilities and green space master plan is something that he's said is a, a priority of his many, many times. So, you know, if we can add a little weight to that to, you know, give it.
All right. What about seniors?
We're going to spend a lot of time next year talking about this or this year. I mean, beyond, beyond the budget, maybe in capital projects, I think we're going to spend a lot of our political capital dealing with the senior exemption. Just knowing, you know, we've been in that, you know, that pool before. So that's just my personal belief.
Are we talking strategy? Are we talking, are we, are we level setting? What, what parts of the conversation can I expect tomorrow since I haven't had an opportunity to talk about senior school tax exemption yet?
So I know for part of it, it's advocating. You know, the other things I threw out there were other options as we look towards maybe possibly talking about other exemptions for seniors and what about the fee waiver, what options exist there? So.
Okay, so we definitely.
Some level sets.
Over that. With our term.
That's, again, that's me, so.
Okay.
I think it's pretty tactical, but it's got a clock attached to it that's ticking right now. So it's, can't be pushed out too far.
Great. All right. And then transportation, which we've touched upon a little bit today. Might not take that much time.
We've got, we'll let the discussion drive that bus. We can brief you on some projects that are, there'll be a couple of projects that are going to be getting underway in 2021. So we can talk about those as well as anything that, anything else you want to talk about.
Okay, great. And then we've got tree ordinance.
If we can, can we, because there are some specific asks, can we just move that above transportation plan solely because it sounds like transportation plan is, is less of something that we need to discuss to decision?
Correct. Yes, we can. All right.
Will transportation plan include Atlanta Avenue update?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll be on this call till we get through both tomorrow, so.
We will. All right. So I'll re-juke this list, show it to you in the morning, just to get your approval. And then we're jumping in. And of course, the intention as always is to look at what do we want to put on the 2021 work plan and make sure it gets executed this year along with timing. All right.
Sounds great.
So before we go, what's a lovely word that just sums up whatever you're taking away from, from your first day of virtual retreat?
Hope. Optimism.
Thanks. I'm proud.
Collaboration.
What was that, Andrea? Proud.
Proud.
Determination.
Come on, people. Rightful.
I'm going to say connection.
Great.
Informative.
Theme work.
Reflective.
Reflective. Thank you.
Right.
Yay, bright.
Yeah. Good. United is the word that comes up for me. Brian, I don't know if you're still there. Okay, we'll take that as a no.
He's got a lot of demands. Not busy, just a lot of demands.
A lot of demands, exactly. Don't say that B word. No one likes the B word. All right. I think that's everyone, yes? Good. Well, thank you all for your focus and dedication today. We will start off tomorrow, same place, same time, giving you from eight forty-five to nine just to get here to bring your coffee and connect a little bit, and then we'll start right at nine.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Until we resume tomorrow.
That's Brian's word.
That's Brian's word.
Bye.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you all. Thanks, Kelly. Bye-bye.
Sure.